Chris Williams is going to be like 10 miles late. He's still up there.
All right, good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April 3rd, 2025. For this moment, if we can please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Legits. Pledge of Legits.
Fifty-two, five. In the United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Lee.
Here.
Matthew Munz.
Here.
Derek Comlett.
Here.
Chris Phillips. Chairman Charles Ray. Vice Chairman Jamie Gerardi.
Here, and Chris said he's on his way. He'll be here in about five minutes. Okay, so we are the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice a month. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on rezonings and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission also serves as a local planning agency, and as the LPA, this body makes recommendations in regard to the consistency with the adopted Pasco County Comprehensive Plan of proposed comprehensive plan amendments and land development code amendments. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it is important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioners meeting. Okay, I think we have a set of minutes to approve.
Move to approve the minutes from September 5th, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I guess one thing as a reminder, I should have mentioned it earlier, but if you have any electronic device, please make sure it's in a silent position so it doesn't disturb anybody during the meeting. And at this time, we will take public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. This will be for anybody in person, or if there's anybody on WebEx that's pre-registered and are in queue. Gianna, do you know, do we have anybody signed up over there? There we go.
Thank you.
Hey, just testing.
We did have one person, oops, we did have one person sign up in advance, however, they are not on WebEx. We do have two individuals sign up for public comment in person.
Okay, so if you're here to speak to anything not on the agenda... Oh, I'm sorry. You have approval publication, please?
The items are advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on August 21st, 24, March 6th, 25, and March 19th, 25, in my application for certified managements and cycles.
Okay, thank you. So if there's anybody here to speak to anything that's not on today's agenda, now is the time. If you can go ahead and please come forward. I will say, and this goes for anybody that comes up in total, we request that when you address the Planning Commission, please do not direct your comments to anybody personally on the commission up here, but rather directed at the issues at hand. This provides mutual respect between the commission members and the public, okay? And do we need to swear everybody in now?
You can either do it now or before the public hearing starts.
Yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and swear everybody in now. If you plan to give any public testimony today, if you can, please stand and raise your right hand, and the clerk will swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give? Because the truth is a whole lot...
I do.
And before you speak, if you can, when you come to the, when you come up to speak, please state your name, address, and then go ahead and acknowledge that you've been sworn, please.
My name's Ryan Flynn. I live at 18526 Lake Idola Road. I just have a general procedural comment before the hearing. The, anytime an MPUD has a massive change in scope, I request or I suggest that we hold a new neighborhood meeting because there's a lot of questions and concerns that can't be addressed in three minutes of public speaking. That, and I feel that a neighborhood meeting would allow all of us to get together and get a better understanding of exactly what we're looking at. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay.
The next individual I have signed up for general comment is Nancy Hazelwood.
Hi, Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place. I'm going to get you all cheat sheets for procedure here, you know? Like sign up and all that. Okay, so I've got about three different things to say, and they're kind of relevant and they're kind of not, thanks. The first one is what I call a cautionary tale. You might have read this in Tampa Bay Times. It happened in Temple Terrace. The city sold 20 acres of land, that's the Rotterson Ranch, to a group associated with Dr. Patel. And it's Terrace Real Estate Holdings LLC that's associated with him. They were supposed to build a college of trade in technology. They put a clause in the application that said, for this situation, that they wouldn't have to do it if it was unfeasible. So they did a bait and switch. Now they're getting 360 units on 20 acres instead of a college of technical fields. So y'all watch when Patel comes calling, okay? Anyways, that's number one. Number two is spectrum. This is closer to home. This is in the Northeast rural area plan. They're working off Bayhead Road and Palomino. And some of the neighbors were dismayed when they found one of the employees passed out in the car. Apparently, he was dead drunk. They called 911, and they aroused the guy and let him go. The next thing that happened was the employee used a citizen's property, changed clothes, visited the bathroom, and then they were gone. They were caught on camera. That's how we knew. So the other difficulty to the neighbors with spectrum is they're working at 8:30 on Sunday when everybody's home and trying to relax. Now, on to the Northeast rural protected area. I have a suggestion, an idea, I'm hoping y'all will consider when you're working in the Northeast rural area for anything. I'd like to request all pervious surfaces instead of asphalt. All parking lots in Northeast protected rural area. Let's go to pervious surfaces. We are the Brooksville Ridge. We are a high-recharge area. This will help us save our water and look better in the area. So we have a dwindling water supply in the county, and this is something that I hope will help with it, and it will look better. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Okay, is there anybody else not signed up that wishes to speak to something not on the agenda today? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Schneider. I live at 34553 Blanton Road in Gate City. It has come to my attention that there are individuals in East Pasco that own nice pieces of property that they want to divide it for their family. However, when they made that application, they were told, no, you can't do that. You have to divide it into much smaller pieces to make a nice little subdivision. In this case, it's ongoing right now. You guys need to be aware that there's something going on in the background that is making it possible for people within the county to dictate what's happening with the land that people own. It's, it's not right. If somebody comes in and says, I have 18 acres and I want to get three, six-acre lots, they should be able to get that. They shouldn't be told, no, you have to divide it into two-and-a-half acre lots and do all kinds of crap. It's not right. You need to know it's happening. We know it's happening, and it's not right. And I hope you agree to watch out for it because it's happening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so nobody else here to speak to anything not on the agenda today? Okay, so we will move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Today, we have seven items in total on the public hearing agenda. My documents say two continuance items, four consent items, and one regular item?
I believe it's four continuance and two consent.
Four continuance, two consent. Okay, that's what I get for reading. All right, so I guess as far as public procedures go, in-person participants and participants attending through WebEx, including the applicant who are pre-registered for the Planning Commission meeting, will be notified by county staff when they'll be permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved, at least 24 hours in advance, which I don't think we have any of those today. Again, once again, in-person participants and WebEx participants, please, when you come forward, please announce your name, address, agenda, item, or title that you're going to speak to, and then the three- or five-minute timer will start. Our agenda, again, is broken down into three sections. There's continuance items, consent items, and regular items. The consent items will be approved by regular vote unless an item is pulled from consent, and once a motion is made on the consent agenda, we'll call for a second and the motion will be voted on. So we want to go ahead and start with the consent items. Gianna?
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, continuance is first. Yeah, let's, yeah.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Gianna German, Planning Development and Economic Growth. We're going to get started with the continuance items, and I'm going to go a little bit out of order today. We are going to start with item PC-5, since PC-2 is its companion item. For PC-5, you are sitting as the local planning agency, PDE-0144, Development Agreement for Riverstone MPUD-KV Homes Tampa LLC. And this is coming with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anybody here to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, I have no objection to the continuance, but I do think that staff needs to fix the subject line for PC-5 and PC-2 because, first of all, they're doing the same thing, so they should not read differently. But more importantly, the description of what's happening in PC-2 is not totally accurate because they're asking for more than 66 homes, not 66 homes. And it's to complete a vision road, not for substantial road improvements, so I'm not sure who came up with these titles, but they need to be fixed. So if you could just make your continuance subject to staff, fixing the titles of PC-5 and PC-2, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, noted. Want to move on to the next one?
The next item is PC-2, and this is the companion substantial modification to the previous item, PC-5. PDE-25-7838, a substantial modification in the name of Riverstone MPUD. And this is coming with the request to continue the item to the April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anybody here to object? Okay, next.
Item PC-3 has a companion zoning amendment, item PC-4. For this item, you are sitting as a local planning agency, PDE-25-0109, CPA 2403, Elite 52 PD. And this is coming with the request to continue the item to the April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anybody here to object? Just a question for fellow Planning Commission members. I thought we used 41 as the dividing line between what was here and what was in Newport Ritchie. Anybody remember that?
That's been the tradition, yes.
Is there a reason this one's continued to the catch-all meeting of April 17th?
Barbara Bullhight, 8627 Grand Boulevard. Staff wasn't able to get the paperwork done for today, and when we measured how far it is to drive here for our neighbor versus driving to Newport Ritchie, it's actually closer for them to drive to Newport Ritchie, so that's the reasoning.
Yeah, I just noticed that in PC-5, we specifically noted in that memorandum that anything west of that intersection would be Newport Ritchie. But then this one came up. That's why I asked the question. Everybody here okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right, next item?
The last item on the continuance is item PC-4, and this is the companion zoning amendment to the previous item PC-3. It's PDE-25-7811. It's a zoning amendment in the name of SR 52 Elite-JDP Elite Development LLC. And this is also coming with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, I know the applicant's present. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay. I think that's all the continuance items in the motion.
Continue items, PC-2, PC-3, PC-4, and PC-5 to the catch-all Newport Ritchie on April 17th.
Do you want to add the subject-to-the-staff corrections for the title for PC-2 and 5?
Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, if you could add that to your motion, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, that's added to the motion.
Okay, motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, I'm going to move on to the consent items now. This will be the last time I'm going out of order, but we're going to go out of order one more time with item PC-6 first, or excuse me, item PC-7 first. This item has a companion rezoning, which is item PC-6. Chairman, I would also like to note for the record that both PC-7 and PC-6, we did receive a late expertise communications, and it has been submitted to the clerk's office. For item PC-7, you are sitting as the local planning agency for this item, PDE-25-0174. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2320, SAV/Old Pasco Townhomes, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and Sheet 14. Changing from RES 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre, to RES 6, residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 18.36 acres of real property located at the northeast corner of Old Pasco Road and Hadlock Drive. And we recommend the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is anybody here to speak on this item? Okay, anything from up here? Everybody good? Okay, next.
Item PC-6 is the companion rezoning to item PC-7. PDE-25-7776, a zoning amendment in the name of Old Pasco Road MPUD-Sav Home Property, excuse me, Sav Property Holdings LLC for a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 106 townhome dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately 18.36 acres located in central Pasco County. And this is coming with the recommendation of approval from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department.
Okay, the applicant's present. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay. Nothing else? I think that's all the consent and agenda, consent and agenda. Some motion? Anybody?
Nobody wants to approve?
Nobody wants to approve? Nobody wants to approve the consent and agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent and agenda.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and the last item that we have on the agenda today is a zoning amendment in the name of Evans County Line 80 MPUD presented by William Vermillion.
Gianna, before you start that, I wanted to just note that when I pull up a mapper, I still see the rural area within the urban concentration area that's there. I assume there's a lag in getting the GIS updated, but I know that's been pulled out of the, you know, we had the issues with the rural area in the urban concentration.
You're referring to 6 and 7.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Yes, sir, that rural urban service area has been adjusted. There may be a lag at GIS, but it has been noted and it's in process.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you. I'm not Will Vermillion. He's handsomer than I am. My name is David Engel. I am the Planning and Economic Development Director for Pasco County. And what I like to do is provide you with a 10,000-foot sightline to what's occurred with the Evans 80 project since the commission last deliberated on the project. The applicant and I have had extensive meetings, and we've come up with an alternative MPUD that will be presented today, and the details will be discussed by Mr. Vermillion. But I just wanted to give you a broad overview of what's transpired and what's changed. The Evans organization has agreed to, at least for 20 years, to eliminate multifamily housing as a component of this project. They've also agreed to modify the land uses on the property to be more business-centric for the local community. Originally, there were 300 multifamily units. There was 1.5 million square feet of warehouse space. So the new MPUD plan does not have any multifamily included. The warehouse distribution has been capped off at 500,000 square feet. There'll be a million square feet of other types of commercial and industrial development, capping the retail that'll support the business center to 100,000 square feet. So you're going to have approximately 900,000 to a million square feet of small business flex that serves the local community. The applicant has also agreed and included in our documentation modifications that they are going to provide the appropriate setbacks off of the scenic roadway called Lake Idola Road. And they've also agreed to architectural review standards for the buildings that are visible from Lake Idola Road. They'll be using different types of treatments, whether it be brick or other facade elements, so we don't see pre-cast tilt-up concrete from the roadway. There is going to be two additional modifications that'll occur between now and the Board of County Commissioners meeting. One is, there is a specific reference in the EDA to the '06 Employment Center and the comp plan and the '06 settlement. Since there is an elimination, at least now in the MPUD plan, removing the residential, the county attorney's office and counsel for the applicant are going to clean that up. And then, since this has been pending for several years now, the variation for the lack of an interconnection on the one part of the property, that has to be updated to the current code, and that'll be done so also. So after the board or the commission renders an opinion and decision today, the recommendation is brought to the Board of County Commissioners. There's going to be a companion piece, which will include not only the MPUD, but an economic incentive agreement to incentivize the construction of $11 million worth of infrastructure to support the business park. The reason is, is that we're creating a new market up here, and we want to have it done in a manner that is compatible with the existing Northeast area. And in the event that, after 20 years, and we default back to having a multifamily residential component, there'll be a clawback provision that they have to pay back a proportional share of the incentive agreement and the incentive dollars. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll be here, and I'd like to have Will present the details of the amended application. Thank you.
So David, just one other major change. I think staff has now changed the recommendation from denial to approval.
Oh, yes, yes, very much so, because it's been substantially modified to the extent where there's been an elimination of the multifamily. And the commercial industrial component is serving the local community and not just distribution, you know, queuing off of the I-75 location, because the warehousing and distribution doesn't employ a lot of jobs, and it's not a real traffic, it's not a real tax generator, and lastly, and most importantly, it doesn't serve local business people in the Northeast area.
To be clear, though, it's not an elimination of multifamily. It's a moratorium for 20 years.
That's correct, and the reason is, is that we have an '06 court settlement that the county executed allowing 300 multifamily apartment units. I feel confident that with the incentives and the momentum of the project, that we'll never get to the point where we have to consider... I feel confident that with the incentives and the momentum of the project, that we'll never get to the point where we have to consider apartment construction on this property.
Are there other components to that economic incentive agreement, or is it really related to the infrastructure improvement?
It's purely eleven million dollars worth of infrastructure.
And that's the reason for the?
Are you able to talk about what?
Excuse me?
Are you able to, at a broad level, talk about what that entails?
As far as what, sir?
Infrastructure improvements.
Oh, yes, I have probable costs that have been generated by their civil engineer. And might I add, you know, if there is a clawback after twenty years, I just wanted to make a point that that clawback will add to the cost basis of the apartments and make them more market difficult.
I just mean what type of infrastructure improvement?
Well, there's, you know, there's sewer, I mean, not sewer, there's storm sewer, roadways, pad-ready construction, laterals going into the industrial properties.
Can I ask the question a different way, David? One of the reasons staff recommended denial originally was because of the utilities.
Yes.
Is any, is the county having, is part of this money going to go to extend utilities to the site or not?
It will not, there's a specific stipulation in the amended MPUD conditions of approval that unless the county provides utilities at one point in time, all of the individual parcels will be served by well-inseptic.
And when I read that condition, am I correct in interpreting the language that it must be well-inseptic that precludes any type of package plant out there?
It does, and in fact, we had to adjust the language to preclude a package plant on that property.
And why?
Because county policy is, we don't want to have any more package plants in the county.
I don't understand why. Why would I want, why would I want a septic system which is not capable of reducing nitrogen to the same levels as a packaged wastewater treatment plant? Why would that be a preferred option?
Well, the type of uses that'll be employed on the property, the waste will be domestically related and non-process related.
Well, domestic waste is a nitrogen generator.
No, I understand.
Why I'm asking, I just don't understand why we want to use low-level tech instead of a higher-level tech.
Well, again, I just, you know, implement county policy, I don't have an answer for you, but that's the policy of the county at this time.
Alright, well, this question I'm going to be asking, so you might want to get someone from utilities to explain that.
I had that same question too.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Vermillion.
Thank you, David.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. Before I get started, there have been some ex parte communications provided to the clerk's office on this project. Thank you.
Perfect.
Dramatic pause.
I didn't have to fill the time too much this time. This is the Evans County Line Road eighty MPUD, of course, PDE twenty-five seventy-seven thirty-eight. We'll breeze through this early stuff, everybody here knows where this is at. Of course, the entitlements requested, the location map, the zoning map, and the future land use map reflecting Employment Center. Here's an overall context map, and this shows the area in terms of what's planned, in terms of the future land use of the area. The subject site highlighted in red, that purple area, which encompasses the subject site is all Employment Center. From the subject site at Lake Iola all the way to the I seventy-five interchange, to the south immediately residential nine dwelling units per acre. Across Blanton Road, there's the old mixed-use flu, which is more intense, and allows for more density than the current Employment Center. And then as we get across the interchange, light industrial Employment Center and some commercial future land uses, showing that this isn't just a standalone parcel with Employment Center in the northeast rural, it's characterized by the whole area. Here's the new master plan that David was speaking to. You'll notice the green space there is that fifty-foot buffer on Lake Iola Road. The applicant has agreed to both the scenic corridor buffering, as well as the building buffering and facades that are in LDC six oh four five in northeast rural from the scenic corridors, as well as the buffering requirements of the northeast rural overlay. That, of course, David spoke about this variation changing. What was in your agenda memo spoke to the possibility of an interconnection to the north. Previously, we had worked with the applicant to try to get a possible stubout to the north, but after talks with the community and talks with the gentlemen that live up there, there's no requirement for an interconnection to the north, and that's spelled out in condition nineteen, specifically the northern connection. The eastern connection, there's still a variation for, there's a large category one wetland that the applicant doesn't intend to impact. Little bit of an overview of what David just went over, talking about the companion economic development agreement that's being drafted and will be heard concurrently with this MPUD, which speaks to the period of time in which multifamily can't be applied for, per that EDA in condition thirty-one of your new agenda packet. There is a rural cross-section which is being adopted for Lake Iola Road, as well as enhanced buffering and roadway features. That condition is in condition sixteen, and if I could take a pause from the presentation, I have sent that cross-section over to Patty, Patty, if you don't mind pulling that up, just to illustrate the rural cross-section. It's a hundred and thirty-five feet, but a majority of that is a clear space, and there's a twenty-five-foot buffer of trees along each side of open space.
And where does it extend from, William, from where to where roughly?
It's any scenic highway per the.
But for this project, where would that?
So this is the frontage, but as well as that southern road, Blanton is also a portion of this as well, and so once it's.
The frontage, okay.
There, I was just speaking in generalities, not to what Joel is going to be doing, but just to the overall area. Blanton will have the same typical section at the end of this as well.
Okay.
Is that sufficient time for the typical? I didn't want to take it away from you guys if you were studying it too hard, but I'll go back to the presentation now.
I've seen it before, many, many years ago.
It does look like one of the hand-drawn typicals.
It's like you dug it out of the archives.
Yes, it appears so, and that, of course, is within the condition sixteen.
Basically fifty-five feet from the travel lanes.
Perfect. Condition thirty-two speaks to the additional building buffering and design features that David touched on with those facades and the specific industrial buffering requirements, as well as the maintenance responsibility of the applicant. This is specifically talking to the fifty-foot setbacks, as well as the possibility of a six-foot wall or the option of a berm. The support commercial acreage, again, was reduced from a total of ten to eight acres in condition thirty-three. And as well as two conditions speaking to, the first, when we last spoke, we talked about the Employment Center master plan, the comprehensive plan that was contemplated to be adopted in this area. Condition thirty-five speaks to this MPUD acting in good faith when that master plan is contemplated in the event that it is developed, that there'll be a portion of that master plan in the future. And condition thirty-six speaks to the improvements at the interchange of seventy-five, even though they're well away from the the project applicant is willing to work on that I seventy-five, County Road forty-one interchange with the applicable parties. When those improvements do happen, as development comes, the future land use that I showed on a previous slide. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for Will?
So I do have one, looking through my notes, so we're worried about the buffering from Lake Iola Road and other areas, but when I read through the allowances, we're letting them go sixty feet high on building heights for both, understanding that multifamily is going to be delayed for twenty years, but the industrial is also, or the commercial piece and industrial piece is sixty-four. Hi.
Yes, sir, and it is important, I believe, to note, and Joel can correct me if I'm wrong, where we last stood was that the multifamily component was largely restricted to townhomes, so there'll be nowhere close to sixty feet as well as condominiums. But as far as the condominium restriction goes, we don't control plating for condominiums, so we may need some help with David Gold seeing on how the enforceability works for condominiums in that condition. But for the industrial, yes, sixty feet.
Okay, I recall, that's a specific comment that was pretty strongly suggested by the public as far as the height of the structures and looking into neighboring properties and the like, so I just wanted to bring that up for consideration. I mean, most industrial buildings are thirty-five, forty feet, clear right, so.
Correct, and I'll let the applicant speak on if they're willing to reduce that or not.
Okay.
William, can you leave that plan back up just for a second, because I have a question. I don't know who's best to answer it, because it's dealing with the EDA, but the eleven million dollars that was quoted, is it is it basically funding the onsite roadway network and stormwater ponds? I'm not, I just wanted to get a general, I don't think we need all the details, but I'm trying to figure out, to Mr. Moody's question, what is it?
Well, we don't have an EDA, I mean, EIA at this time.
What was discussed, how about that?
What was discussed was the roadway improvements on Lake Iola, the internal collector road and service roads, regrading of the site, balancing the fill on the property, and also creating pad-ready locations to promulgate quick absorption by the industrial market.
So it's the horizontal infrastructure, the county funds wouldn't be used to put in the buffering or any of that stuff, is that what?
It is not on, it is not on the probable cause, sir.
Okay, so as a general, it's the road grade improvements on Lake Iola, the onsite roads, cyclering and stormwater. Is that generally accurate?
Yes, sir, it's generally accurate, that's correct.
David, so if the, if this entire area is built out according to the future land uses that are there, so the Employment Center, the multi-use, the light industrial and so forth, do you guys foresee the need for additional improvements to Lake Iola and some of the roads?
Well, I think we need to have a master plan for that area of the county, it is an Employment Center area. There is some currently higher-density residential and commercial areas there, and we have to, we need a sub-area policy that'll govern the future development there. So our next phase is, since Evans is not part of that, they cooperate, but they're already here, we're going to come forth with an area plan and bring it forth to the Planning Commission for review.
Because that was kind of, I'm looking at the buffering for this particular project, which we've improved the buffering from the last time we spoke, obviously, but if we end up having to make improvements to Lake Iola Road as the rest of the area gets built out over time, and that's going to erode into that buffering, obviously, and it's going to reduce some of the setbacks from where the buildings are going to be built, so.
Well, we're going to maintain consistency with that cross-section through future development there in that area of the county. Those two roads, Blanton and Lake Iola, are designated scenic roadways, so there'll be uniformity to the cross-section that we showed you.
So, question about the master plan. When we last discussed this item, one of the issues I was not comfortable with was that for this EC, the comp plan specifically called for a stepping down of the intensity of the uses as we get towards the northeast rural area. I see the step down in intensity from east to west, but I don't see a step down in intensity from north, from south to north up against the AR five and AG flu land use category just to the north of the site, how are we doing that? I understand there's a buffer there, and I appreciate the buffer.
Well, you know, it's really an east-west transect that we're working with, not a north-south. And one of the reasons why this project's been laid out as such is that the most maybe unappealing visual construction is the distribution side, and that'll be down in the low end of the property and invisible from the roadway. Regarding the north and south property owners, they'll have to comply, the Evans project will have to comply with our buffer requirements between industrial and residential.
Why don't you feel there's a need to step it down in the other direction?
I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, you say it's an east-west transect, well.
Well, that's the way that the plan is designed now.
Well, I understand that, I can see that, and so was the previous plan, step down from east to west. I recognize that, and maybe my comment was misunderstood at the last meeting. What I was looking for is some step down in intensity to help ease the impact to the residents immediately adjacent to the north.
Okay, so.
They're not separated by a roadway like.
No, 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 I'm sure you're getting at.
Right away, they got to, they're going to have a six-foot berm according to the conditions of approval with potentially sixty-foot high buildings.
Well, that we can open up with the applicant at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand that it's going to have to conform with this buffering that's associated with industrial, but, you know, that sort of applies to the rest of the county, this is northeast rural protection area, so.
Well, and the issue is the comp plan didn't, buffering's required, and I appreciate the buffering, but the comp plan specifically calls for a step down in intensity. Intensity and buffering aren't one.
You will note that it's not only the buffer, but we did put a automotive access driveway between the property line and the industrial uses to provide additional setback. It doesn't answer your question, but, you know, we did try to address it through design.
I'm talking about on the north side, is he on the south side?
Yeah, the road's on the south side.
Right.
I don't have an answer, sir, and I would hope that the applicant could have a discussion with the Planning Commission on that matter.
Okay.
So let me ask this too, in one of the conditions of approval about the master plan says that the county part designed this, so what was the county's involvement in designing this, and when did the county get in the business of designing master plans?
Well, we didn't design the plan, we designed the appropriate land uses for the property. I didn't, we didn't, we didn't prepare the consent plan, they did it under our direction and our negotiation. Okay. Good catch.
Okay. Anything else from up here? Applicant? Alright, the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Joel Two, Belt and Consultant, forty-seven hundred Ridgeview Road, Palm Harbor, Florida, and I represent the property owner and the applicant, Evans Properties, Inc. Before I get into the revisions that the applicant has agreed to with planning staff, I do want to just, to perfect the record, just in case there is a challenge by anyone down the road to this proceeding, to specifically incorporate by reference all the documents and the prior testimony that we submitted at the February sixth, twenty twenty-five hearing when this was continued. The other bookkeeping item is, after that February sixth hearing, where for the first time we heard some discussion about comp plan consistency, you'll recall a lot of that discussion, we asked our planning consultant, Ronald F. Pianta, AICP from Coastal Engineering and Associates, to prepare a written consistency analysis that, I won't bore you with all the details, but we would like permission to submit that for filing and into the record, just so the record is perfected on any consistency.
Both to receive.
Point.
Second. Alright, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for indulging the procedural necessities. I have been authorized, my Evans Properties Incorporated, as I said, the property owner and applicant, to acknowledge that the applicant now agrees with the proposed revisions to the conditions of approval and the revised conceptual master plan, and I emphasize the word conceptual, because that, of course, is what the MPUD master plan is. We concur and appreciate staff's recommendation of approval with these conditions. One item which was addressed a moment ago by the Planning Commission, the proposed building height on the industrial uses. To my knowledge, that was just a standard building height that's been approved repeatedly by the county and is authorized. and is authorized in the Land Development Code of sixty feet. However, in consultation with my client and our engineer, we're happy to reduce that sixty-foot height to forty-five-foot building height. Our engineer assures us that that should suffice for either the flex space or any distribution space. So we're happy to make that reduction, and we'll stipulate to that change in that condition. As to the other two items, I was going to address.
Joel, before you leave the height issue, there's also a sixty-foot height for, I realize it's only potential use is the residential. Are you sticking with, you're wanting sixty foot on that one?
No, in the event, in the event that there does become a residential element, which I think we all acknowledge is extremely unlikely if this is approved based on the current conditions. Because obviously, once we start the site development and invoke the economic incentive agreement, we're probably going to hit the point of no return very quickly in Phase One, would be my guess. But to answer your question, Mr. Goldstein, the same forty-five feet would certainly be adequate on the residential element. So we would agree to that.
So you would agree to forty-five feet for any use, basically?
Correct. I think across the board, forty-five-foot height limit is perfectly acceptable for the corporate office park, the flex space, even if there were townhomes or anything of that sort twenty-one years or later from now. So those, those two changes would be fine. On the Lake Iola frontage, I just wanted to point out that it's not just the fifty-foot buffer landscape setback area. That, that is in addition to the additional right-of-way that we're providing. So there was some comment that future improvements to Lake Iola could somehow take away from that fifty-foot buffer. That's, that's not correct, because we're using the full right-of-way width that the master roadway plan, the county's adopted long-range plan, has for the ultimate build-out improvements. So we're, we're not only deeding the additional right-of-way for that future road improvement, but still have from that fifty feet more setback with the landscape buffer in quarter. On the north boundary, I think our position on that is, is pretty firm, and let me explain why. I think when the county designated Employment Center on this property, everyone knew that that meant that this was going to be an employment center within that overall northeast rural protection area, and we discussed that. So I think it's patently unfair to say that somehow we can't use that. I think Evans offer to provide, when the code only requires a fifteen-foot setback on that boundary, and we're offering not only fifty feet, more than three times the setback, but committing to either build a six-foot berm with landscaping or a solid opaque wall, no PVC. I think that setback transition clearly fulfills the intent of any buffering, transition, step down, whatever you'd like to call it. And I point out, not to cast stones, but now that we've looked further, that one adjoining property to the north that has a home, it actually has five structures on that property, some of which are literally right on our property line. So it's not like we're doing something that isn't done there. I don't know if all those are permitted, I don't know if all those are in compliance, but there are like five structures on that parcel. So I think we're being very generous here to set back fifty feet, landscape, buffer, berm, build a wall. And we're agreeing to do that for our full northern boundary, which is quite a run. So respectfully, that's really all we can do there. We're taking quite a shot here, given what Evans' opinion of its vested rights are. And I think this is a very fair compromise. And as I said, I appreciate Mr. Engel and his staff coming to terms with us on this proposal. And we greatly would encourage you to please recommend approval if you can see fit. We're happy to answer any questions.
Trying not to ask you a law question, but I'll make you practice law. I ask the question about the intensity.
I'll punt that to the lawyers.
There, there's a condition in here about when the MPUD becomes effective and expirations of appeal periods, and it's almost like there's an anticipation that there may be litigation following this. That was the reason for my question. I was looking to try to figure out, do we have something that's defensible if this is appealed?
Well, I, I can address that by telling you what Evans counsel. They, they participated, obviously, in drafting that provision. Mr. Goldstein has reviewed it. You always hope you don't have a third-party challenge, consistency challenge. But obviously, for Evans to give up its two thousand and six vested rights, that its attorneys firmly believe they have, we need assurance that either we get this package resolution approved or we don't. And if we don't, the attorneys insist that we go back to ground zero and be able to stand upon those existing rights. So we have no knowledge of any third-party challenge. This is just in an abundance of caution in case someone sees fit. Obviously, if you recommend approval and the BCC feels, sees fit to approve it, we're hopeful that that will be the end of it, and the thirty-day period will run with no appeal being filed. And we can proceed with the project and do our best to implement the economic development agreement with Mr. Engel.
Is there any development advantage to you having the ability to have a package plant versus?
Okay, I appreciate you bringing that back up. We are in agreement with what staff has told us is the administration's strong preference on how utilities be dealt with. That's been county utilities and county administrators' policy for quite a while here. We all know that the specific comprehensive plan policies in this case appear to authorize something more, such as a package plant.
It's like it uses the word shall construct, not may or.
And, and again, we're trying to make peace. We're willing to do it the county's way if that gets this resolved. But if you notice, even the redraft of that particular condition, it does say there in the redline part, unless otherwise agreed between the county and the applicant. So in the event the county engineer, public utilities and or the county administrator decide that they get comfortable with something else, that condition would allow us to do that. But if they don't change their mind and agree that that's a better solution, then obviously we're authorized to go with the wells and septic. So I think that's to be addressed. And our capable engineer may try to do, as you know, exactly what you said. He may try to convince the county engineer that there actually is a better solution, and that's more environmentally friendly and doesn't really hurt the county's business position. Clearly, we're not getting utilities' business, we're just trying to provide for our own project.
And I, I don't know where, I don't understand what the reason for that particular policy David alluded to was. What I'm looking for is what's good for the environment and, you know, we're trying to get the county off of septic systems.
I may be speculating here, and maybe David Engel got a better answer from utilities, but I suspect the underlying concern is that the county has had to go out and acquire a number of private utilities at great expense to the taxpayers of Pasco County and utility ratepayers. And I think they're trying to avoid having to go out and acquire another private utility. But, but David Engel could tell me.
Sure, well, I will tell you, I in absolutely no way support the creation of a private utility but using the highest and best technology for the environment. I don't think we should be ruling out a technology because we're scared of the utility, that's all. I, in no way would support a private utility here.
I concur with Mr. Goldstein's characterization of the why of that policy. We just don't want to inherit a failed package plant and have to take.
Well, I don't think you want to inherit a failed industrial septic system either. That's a lot worse for the environment.
Well, sir, I, I don't, you know, that's, that's the direction I've had since I've been here for seven years, to avoid package plants. So I can only tell you that and.
I'm, I'm just saying, whoever makes such policies, there's a difference between having a package plant and having a private utility. There's lots of mobile home parks out here and RV parks that have their own package plants that aren't private utilities, that aren't a problem for the county. And I don't see here anybody proposing to create a private utility. So I hope they'll rethink that policy, but the applicant appears to be in agreement. I'm gonna let it go, but I'm just telling the powers that be, you might want to rethink that.
And I agree with Mr. Moody on that. I never read that condition as being a private utility condition, but using the highest and best technology in a package plant that's available. So hopefully they will reconsider that.
Highest and best street technology.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from up here? I think just from a procedural standpoint, Joel, I guess while you're up here, probably a question for you. I know at the last hearing, we had closed public comment, but I believe there's been some discussion since this, the county's position changed, et cetera. I, I think it's probably best to reopen this for public comment, do you agree?
Yes, I was asked that question, and I conferred with Evans Properties' legal counsel and also with Evans Properties. And we agree that at least on the subjects of the conditions which have been revised and the revised master plan, namely the new changes, that it'd be appropriate to offer any member of the public who wishes to address those new points, the opportunity to speak again. We have no objection to that. I think it's probably the correct thing to do. Okay, thank you.
And Joel, one more thing while you're up here, and you might need your conditions of approval on it. But it's thirty-two D, it deals with the northern buffer. I appreciate your efforts there, it's really great to see that added. But I did notice in there that parking is a permitted use within that buffer area. You know, it's however that landscape drainage, parking, perimeter wall, berm, similar features should be allowed within the fifty-foot building setback area. So are we saying that parking's going to be allowed within?
Well, my thought was that if we're required to do a six-foot berm with landscaping on top or a six-foot opaque wall, that cars parked there will not be visible from the adjacent property anyway because of that required screening. So, and, you know, I didn't think there was any harm in having, you know, roll of parking behind the building for employees or something if, if that's what the site, we have, obviously, laid out these lots. But I just don't see what the harm is of a flat surface parking.
I'm actually glad he brought that up. To me, that answers my question about a step down in uses, okay? Parking is a reduction in the intensity of the use, okay?
Would you be agreeable to vehicular parking? Because parking could be trucks and maybe not.
That, that's, that's very fair comment, yes, yes, sir. We would be happy to stipulate that along that northern buffer area, that it had to be just vehicular surface. Yep, vehicular passenger vehicle parking.
What condition number is that?
Thirty-two D.
Just so we don't lose track, can we just get a motion for that change now?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a third? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
We'll, we'll work that condition out with Mr. Engel and Mr. Goldstein since we have a couple other things to tweak here before BCC.
I also wanted to address, briefly address Mr. Moody's question. Yes, I do think it's, nobody asked me whether it was defensible, and I'm the one that probably would have to defend it. It was interesting that you asked Joel, but.
I'm busy.
But yes, I think it is subject to us making a tweak to Condition One related to the applicability of the comp plan. But Joel and I have discussed that that can be done.
Okay.
All right.
I do have one question before we do open up the public comment, related to Condition twenty-five. And it's based on the discussion the planning commission just had. I guess my question is, I'm wondering whether the, unless mutually agreed otherwise by the county and the MPUD owner, might be in the wrong spot? Like, I'm wondering if it belongs after, it says shall be required to utilize wells, water storage tanks and septic tanks. I'm wondering if that should say unless mutually agreed otherwise by the county? Because that's a sentence dealing with what happens until we have public water and sewer.
Yes, I, I agree with you, just in case public utilities and administrator decide that a purely private technology plant that isn't for public customers and isn't a private utility would be a better solution. So yes, David, I do agree that just moving that qualifier up would probably remove ambiguity. Because that's what I'm talking, I'm saying that if the county insists, then we're committed to do well in septic. But I would at least like the opportunity for our engineer, when we get into specific site design, to be able to have a sit-down with the county engineer and utilities and, and hopefully convince them to do the best, the best solution. But, you know, we understand we can't commit the county to that, because as of this date, that's contrary to their policy. But moving that qualifier is a good idea. We can do that in the touch-up for BCC.
If we get a motion on that one, too.
So moved. Do you want to do the building height while we're at it? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and then we've got.
And also reduce the building height to forty-five feet for all the uses.
So moved again.
Second.
Was there somebody else we missed? We said those two?
Okay, that's it.
No.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Did you all get all that? Yeah. You think? So just to clarify what we just approved, it was the modification of the building height to forty-five feet?
For all uses.
For all uses, and it was the revision to Condition twenty-five to move that unless mutually agreed upon language up to the discussion on the septic tanks and wells. Okay. Okay, now we will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Do you want to call them in order, Gianna, that everybody signed up?
I only have one person signed up at this time.
So we'll call that person, and then we'll go through open comment.
Ryan Flyner?
Flyner, sorry.
Sorry.
Hello again, Ryan Flynn, one eight five two six, Lake Iola Road. Here representing my family, my in-laws, my wife and my children. I first want to say thank you to all parties for migrating away from the original concept of the three hundred apartments, townhomes, or whatever you want to call them, and the one point five million square feet of warehouses. While this is a great step forward, as a directly affected party, I still have a lot of questions, concerns, and seek assurances. I have read the Northeast Pasco Rural Protection Overlay District over and over again. And the one line that sticks out more than any other is in the Intent and Purposes section. The provision of this section is, are intended to assist in preserving and protecting Northeast Pasco County's existing rural and agricultural character for existing residents while providing for the areas of orderly and appropriate growth to allow future residents the opportunity to enjoy this, its rural lifestyle. I'm not against, and I'll make that clear, I'm not against the Evans' right to develop their property. I just want it to be compatible with the area, and being directly next door to the north, it means a lot to us. So, that said, my questions and concerns lie in how will this MPUD adhere to that mission statement? My question and concerns are based on the understanding I should not be visually intruded upon by developments next to my rural residential property. We already talked about it a little bit, but what is the maximum, what is the set maximum building height? You said forty-five feet, mainly, I ask that because I don't want something towering over me. Number two, we request assurances that the individual lots outlined in the master plan cannot be combined to backdoor their way back into additional large warehouses. The buffering, I appreciate that you guys are including us in the buffering, but we request that it be the six-foot berm with irrigated landscaping on top to provide additional height if you're going to approve this. And number four, per F, future land use two point one point nine, we want restrictions on lighting to protect our night sky. I do not want to be intruded upon by bright lights at night. It's nice and dark, and I can see the stars right now, I don't want to lose that. We very much like the idea of a business park, keyword park. We envision small offices in a landscape setting serving our local businesses and residents. Again, I thank you guys for all the meetings we've had on this and the, you know, that it wasn't just run-through, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Next, Nancy, you gonna come next?
Wow, I'm amazed, Nancy Hayeswood, three, four, one, one, now a nice place. I'm amazed at the jobs that y'all have done working on this. I see so much improvement, and I want to congratulate staff and planning on what they have suggested. We're on the way to doing something much better than what was originally conceived. I want to point out. I want to point out that even though it's been asked quite a few times before, the county never came up with a plan on how the EC was supposed to fit into Northeast Rural. We did ask, we went special conditions for it in there. So that's why we're at this point today. And thank God you all have finally worked it out a lot better. I would like to, as I was talking about earlier, previous surfaces would be perfect in this area and ought to be a condition all over Northeast Rural in order to help sustain our natural resources. Also, as Ryan said, lights. I was just looking at lights in different commercial areas in Tampa. And if you think about Ebor City and the lights they have there, those round things up there that don't affect the whole neighborhood, because yes, right now we have dark sky and we all like it there and appreciate it. Having some type of big overhead light is just not going to get it. What we need is something smaller that fits in. And so I'm hoping that is something that we can come into. Thank you for your time and attention and any other suggestion that you can do that can help keep us a community and a small community, I'd appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Yep, come on up.
Hi, my name is Judy Maddox. I live on Hawkeye Road, just down from the development area. And my concern is the traffic, and I know you've reduced it by several hundred cars with just a smaller amount of families going in there. But Lake Iola and Spray Lake Highway are getting very popular with people deciding that they can get through, going to Brooksville from I-75 and the County Road 41 exit, which has increased a lot of the traffic on there. And I'm afraid that there's going to be a lot of accidents because of that curb between Blanton Road and Lake Iola Road. And I'd like to see if we could do something about that intersection. And I know there's been several studies done on it. And right now we have the RB park going in and it's going to cause a major, major problem in there. So I'd like to see maybe a possible light in there or a roundabout of some, not a roundabout. You don't want a roundabout with RBs, RBs, sorry. But something that will help that intersection because it's, the road itself is getting very, very crowded. Sometimes it takes a while to get out from Hawkeye Road onto Lake Iola Road. And I'd like to see a, just a possible rearrangement of that intersection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak?
Mr. Chair, I do have one question for staff. But, or Joel can answer, I don't know, because I was not involved in the discussions of this. So, the comment about the plan and whether it's subject to change, there is a condition that talks about it, that's conceptual, that it's subject to change as long as the substantive intent is achieved. Is, is the substantive intent for the purple area of the plan that it's going to be smaller office slash light industrial buildings and not large warehouses? Because it's showing sort of more individual, smaller lots for that area. And so I'm, I just want to be clear, because the concern is raised that that area might become large warehouses as well, but I don't, I don't know whether that condition necessarily prohibits it or not. I don't know what the substantive intent was for the purple area.
Well, if you also look at the color coding on that, the intent and the discussion I had with Mr. Engel, which he made pretty clear to me, was to answer your question basically is yes. The intent is that any large flex warehouse distribution would be in the yellow area, just on the eastern part. That literally goes, the elevation change, almost 100-foot drop, literally, where you would not even see those buildings from either the west or the south. And that the front half of the project, if you will, will be a corporate office park slash smaller flex space on smaller individual lots. Now, obviously, the reason that both Mr. Engel and I need a little bit of wiggle room is he's passed along leads with a couple very credible light industrial corporate park developers who are looking for that type of smaller flex space. But without having one of them actually onboard to come in and help design this, we don't know exactly what it will look like. But the intent is absolutely what you said, that the western half will be committed to those smaller, more individual local uses and that any large use would be put on the back 40, if you will. In this case, literally the back 40, since it's an 80-acre tract. So yes, and that's why we color-coded it differently.
Yeah, I read the color coding, but it just says, it says office slash light industrial. Light industrial could include distribution, so, but if.
We, I'll be happy to work on the terminology and the coding on the master plan with Mr. Engel, but that's our intent.
Are you looking for like a square footage limit?
Well, I don't.
We don't know until you get users.
I don't, I'm not necessarily looking for anything. I'm, I'm trying to be, there's an existing condition that says that this plan is, I guess you could call it somewhat binding. It's conceptually binding as long as the substantive intent is achieved. I was just trying to clarify, what was the substantive intent for?
Well, the substantive intent is you're going to have this grid system. That's why we defined those roads. It was critical to have that one common road along the south boundary, for example, because if, everything south of this is also EC. So we want the ability to integrate this with other corporate park, other uses. So there was a method to the madness that Mr. Engel and I went through to come up with what we did. We got as specific as we thought we could be without having a user in hand. And I think in all fairness, we need to have some trust and confidence in the planning staff to implement this when we get a user. We can't, we can't plan and design something that doesn't exist.
I don't disagree with you. I was just trying to figure out, just it was on the record? Because that condition doesn't say what the substantive intent of the plan is.
All right, let me see if I can word it this way, so you can play the tape back one day. The intent is that the larger users will be pushed to the rear part of the property. Smaller users would be pushed toward the front, along with any support commercial, with the intent being that we create something that looks like a integrated corporate office park look on the front with smaller flex space users that are potentially office or clean light industrial or support commercial. And then you would transition on the rear half to either more substantial industrial users or warehouse distribution, depending on what the market is.
I was going to suggest you can make a modification to the color coding description that says, you know, office light industrial excluding warehouse distribution.
That's a good idea and we're happy to do.
Excluding warehouse distribution.
But I think as David pointed out, that is something that's allowed in the I-1 light industrial park-type zoning and distribution doesn't necessarily have to mean million square.
Right, may not be huge.
Warehouse, it could be.
Yeah, so I, so I think, look, I'm comfortable with Joel just said, it just, it's not documented anywhere. So maybe staff, William, are you listening? You could repeat what Joel just said somewhere in your agenda memo so that 10 years from now when somebody wants to know what the substantive intent of this plan was, that it's documented somewhere?
We can even add a note on the master plan. I think it's easier to verbalize it than it is to draw out specifically something that you don't have.
Yeah, I'm not trying to lock anybody into anything, I want to be clear. I just, there's a phrase in the condition that talks about the substantive intent of the plan and I didn't, it's not stated anywhere. So I just want it stated somewhere as to what, clearly there's a different intent for the yellow area versus the purple area, but somebody needs to explain what that is.
Well, it's just colors that I like. My new, my new passive site.
So Joel, could you speak to, the first time it came up and spoke for public comment, you mentioned the idea of a preference to a berm with some landscaping up top of the berm to add some height to it. Would you be opposed to something like that?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That was my little asterisk right here by this item. I spoke with my client and our engineer and because of the quantity of dirt that we need to move on this topographically challenged site, we will, we will agree to delete the opaque wall option along the northern boundary and commit to doing the landscape berm. We're going to be moving a bunch of dirt anyway. We'll just move enough to berm that up and landscape it and irrigate it. It'll be a more attractive solution long-term and frankly, one that we can maintain easier than maintaining a wall.
Excellent. And then the second part to that, too, is talking about lighting at night, so.
Now, my understanding on that, and William or Gavin or Mr. Engel can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the LDC already requires directional light, right? I mean, are we required to use directional daylight? So, I mean, and the fixture requirements already in the code.
I think, I think it was more directed towards if, now, we've already reduced to 45 feet, so that's going to help some. But I think there might have been some concern, even with directional lighting, if you had it at the top of a 45-foot structure, that could still create some light pollution, so.
Well, as we all know, you got to do enough to be safe and not have liability and not have assaults in the parking lot.
Maybe reducing the lighting height down further on the building to still accomplish what you're trying, I think they were.
Any developer will be happy to do the minimum lighting the county will require that keeps, that keeps their lawyers and their insurance carrier happy. So, we'll work with staff on that, but we have no reason or desire to have robust lighting beyond whatever the code requires or can be approved on the construction plans.
I do recall there have been some MPDs in the past where staff has imposed a dark sky lighting requirement, but I don't know if that's something that would apply here or not. Maybe William or Terry knows what I'm talking about, but. I mean, I recall seeing that condition in other MPDs.
If there's any place to have it, it would be in the Rural Protection area.
One of the things you have to take into consideration, and I agree with Joel, there's a fine line between, I've got to have enough light for safety and security and yet we don't want to disturb neighbors, but if we're going to have a six-foot-high landscape berm, assuming there's trees and shrubs, and then I've got this tree canopy along Lake Iola Road and I've got an additional buffer along the frontage of Lake Iola Road, I've got lots of trees, that, those things over time, you know, over 20 or 30 years are going to get tall and they will provide an adequate light screen in and of themselves. You've got to keep that in mind. Maybe on day one they won't, but over time they will.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably going to be anything that's around the edge of the property where the lighting may be an issue in the beginning. And especially if you do, if you do do a parking area, they're along, right behind that berm and you have parking lot lighting there, so I could, I could see that potentially being an issue for the neighbor.
We're, we're happy to work on a condition with staff prior to BCC where we try to work with what they're comfortable. They have parameters to do, let's say, on, on any, any perimeter areas adjacent on the west or north. Because the south is going to be employment center and the east is nothing. So, we have no problem on the west and north boundary on the perimeter.
Especially the north.
Working, working or being sensitive to directional lighting and minimizing external light impacts. That, that's not a problem. We'll come up with something with Mr. Engel and Mr. Vermillion on that.
So, as a cleanup item, if somebody can make a motion, there, condition 32? Yeah, the 32 needs to be modified for the northern, north side buffer. Somebody can make a motion for that change?
Yeah, to eliminate the opaque wall option.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
We also need to make somehow document, so I don't know if we can make a motion out of the document, this substantive intent for the areas to the east.
You mean the substantive intent of the, the MPD plan?
Yeah.
I think if you just make a motion for staff to update in their, that in their agenda memo, I think that would suffice.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
And then, I don't know about the lighting, if we need to address that at all in the motion. I know he's on record saying he'll work with staff on that, so.
Unless you have something specific, that's, I probably would just let that lie until staff can figure it out.
Sounds good.
I thought staff was going to offer up a dark sky condition, but it barely.
Well, that, this is why I'm here, William Vermillion.
Okay, okay.
I got through that, yeah.
Here I am.
I dropped the gun.
A couple of things for the record, before Barbara left, our friendly neighborhood Barbara left, she, she let me know that we did approve a task order in 2024 for that intersection at Lake Blanton and Iola for improvements there that was on the CIP. So we do have funding allocated for that that the citizen talked about. And dark skies is already required as a portion of the land development code in Northeast Rural.
So the intersection's in design or where is that?
We, we have funds allocated for it and it's being designed and permitted by the contract.
So, let me get to your second comment then, William. I'm aware that it's required, but I thought that was a section of the code that only applied to residential.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that accurate or am I wrong?
Nictarius Peters, planning development economic growth. That is true, that a part of the code belongs to the residential, but I believe Lake Iola is residential rural. As a scenic road, it would apply. As one of the classifications of the scenic road.
Well, in abundance of caution, can you just put it in your MPD conditions?
Yeah, we can.
And you said that applies along Lake Iola, but not along the northern boundary?
Correct, but I, I don't disagree with the conversation that's taking place that you can put it into the condition as Joel's noted.
Right, we will work on that condition that applies that lighting condition on the west and north boundary of the MPD.
Terry, can you just elaborate on what, what does that mean? What I don't want to do is give them a base, something that's a completely vague standard to me.
Or is unsafe.
There's two classifications that appear in the comprehensive plan in the land development code. Scenic rural roadway and rural.
No, I'm talking about the dark sky.
Oh, the dark sky. One second.
Yeah, I was curious to get that.
I think it's in section 604 of the code.
Yeah, basically it provides frontal lighting.
Is there like a foot candle or a lumen restriction or something or?
Yeah, it's the, based on the Illumination Engineering Society of North America, IES standard.
Okay, all right, so there's a standard.
Yes.
Fair enough.
And I, I think basically Joel just said, he acknowledged that he's going to work with a condition for BOCC meeting.
I'm good with that.
Chris, did you have something else?
I was just curious what that intersection, if they knew what that intersection's going to look like yet.
It's anticipated to be a three-way stop currently, is what the task order contemplated for the design and permitting.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other further public comment? No? Anything else from the dice?
Did we get the vehicle parking only change?
I think we did. That was already part of the prior motion.
Okay.
If anybody wants to know what the dark sky requirement is, 604.5F of the code. But it talks about for subdivisions, that was my point, Terry, is that it, it didn't clearly apply to an office industrial park.
So you create a condition that kind of mimics that?
I think that was, I think that was the intent.
Yes, I just love that there's a standard.
It refers to the standards that are created by the Illumination Engineering Society of North America.
Is that the Illuminati?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that's a reputable organization if it's in our code, but I, I can't tell you that I haven't read their, their material.
Pretty good chance they don't exist.
That's what they want you to think.
All right, I think we've closed public comment at this point.
Joel, are you offering, did you want any more rebuttal or you're done? Okay, all right.
The guy with his hand raised, does somebody want to, I mean, we close?
Just, just as a reminder, if you take more public comment, you're going to get more rebuttal, too, but it's.
But I like Joel, too, so.
All right, so if you can't come forward, please. Okay, you can't just raise your right hand and the clerk will swear in.
Please swear for the testimony or else get twisted up.
My name is James Navarro, senior, and I have a question regarding.
Need your address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. 34721 Blanton Road, Date City, Florida.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the part of the commercial end, the back end of it. Can someone? Can someone theoretically buy a portion of that, or are they renting a portion of that where they could have distribution, or would that be denied? Say, yeah, uh, the Evans folks said that the first, uh, I guess the E, east part of that commercial can be small units, but what about the back? How much of the back are they gonna buy, and then say, you know, we need all of this distribution, and then we got the same problem?
Sir, sir, if, if we could pull up the sight lines, so we know what you're talking about, 'cause you, you're saying back, and I don't know what you're talking about, which part?
Well, the back, this back end.
Which color, which color, yellow?
The yellow, yeah.
Okay.
The yellow, yeah, that portion, but the back half, I, I believe it's designated for, um, some kind of, uh, industrial area?
My understanding is the entire yellow area is a lot, would be allowed to have distribution.
Industrial distribution.
It's, it's the area we were talking about earlier where that's, may not be allowed, is in the per, is in the purple area.
Well, I think what we're talking about is scale, right?
Yeah, right.
We mean large, large-scale distribution and warehousing.
I mean, how many acres? He's, he's talking about 40 acres in that yellow area. So, I say somebody comes along and wants, excuse me, to buy the whole thing, or to rent whatever their, you know, their agreement is, they can conceivably put a distribution center there.
In the yellow area?
Am I incorrect?
Yes, that's accurate.
In the yellow area, correct, but not in the pink or purple.
But I think what he's asking is could they buy the whole thing and turn it into that, and then I, I think the answer is, and.
Yeah, I think it's yes. It's yes.
Yeah.
But if it's a substantive change where it doesn't meet the spirit of this plan.
Exactly.
Then they'd have to come back for a modification, and there would be more hearings like this.
Well, this, this is why I asked the question, what was the substantive intent, and what the answer I got back was that the yellow area was available for distribution. It was the, it was the purple area where I was unclear, but I think Joel's statement, and unless David Engel tells me I'm wrong, the intent of the yellow area is, is potentially for a single-user distribution center.
And Mr. Navarro, just to clarify, I think the reason why they wanted to locate those heavier or larger uses towards that portion of property is because of topography. So, there's a huge drop in that part of the property, which will make a large building like that less visible from outside.
But, uh, following up on that, uh, there still would be, uh, the large, uh, semis going through, and, and, and is such affecting the interstate as well? Is that, am I correct to assume that?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It doesn't sound good from a, uh, a landowner's perspective, in my opinion. Thank you.
Well, I think a lot of that traffic circulation too, and, and the applicant probably speak to this, but I think that's partially why, or probably why the driveway to the project is on the south side of the, of the plan, to keep the traffic further away from that northeast rural area to the north.
But it's still, they would at some point have to go, uh, down I-75 there, wouldn't they?
Right, but one of the things, one of the things where, that's difficult with this, is we have to remember that this is only one parcel within a much larger employment center designated area.
Yeah, but what's one, excuse me for interrupting you, but what's one grain of sand? Nothing, but you put it all together and you got a desert.
You didn't let me finish.
You brought him up here.
Yeah, it's all right, and I, at the outset of this hearing, Mr. Engel explained that the county staff, over the coming months or year, will be working on a grand master plan along with the applicant.
Subarea plan?
For the, and a subarea policy for the overall EC. The county has acknowledged that it has not done so, and now recognizes the need to do so to plan this, and I think that's why they have these red arrows up here where these properties to the south are included in this EC area, and the plan is that this will be one cohesive development, so you may see some of that traffic coming through those other properties, not necessarily all the way out to Lake Iola and down the center drive of the, of this park. I think, and it's hard to see it with just this parcel, but there's going to be a larger plan for the area.
Could we go back to that slide? It was in very beginning of the, um, county's presentation, uh, kind of the overall area view of the EC.
While, while we're pulling the slide up, Mr. Chair, I would also point out that we are capping distribution warehouses at 500,000 square feet, where it was a million and a half square feet when the original proposal was submitted. That will ameliorate some of the heavy semi generation on the side.
Oh, that's good to know. Well, thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Joel, Joel, you wanna offer any more rebuttal?
Okay. Very good.
They were just pulling that up, that was one, you know, that might be helpful for the gentleman to see, uh, the overall view of the future land use.
Was that the map you're looking for, Derek, or?
That was, I think that's what they, it was.
The prior one, there you go.
No, it wasn't one, it was assumed out of the car, they had color codes. There you go. So, that kinda gives you an idea with, you know, so the, so the purple is all EC, this is EC, this is EC on both sides of the, of the interstate here.
And that's, that's industrial here.
This is, this is industrial here, so.
I think Commissioner Moody's point was that there might be a direct connection from Blanton at some point, from those properties to the south, is that what you were trying to say?
Yes, that is exactly the point.
Okay. All right, no, uh, anything else from up here, or do we have a motion?
I, I will make the motion to approve, and I'll say that, uh, you know, I appreciate Mr. Tool's efforts on this. It's been, I was a hard no on this before. You guys have come light years. Mr. Evans, thank you for your, your work on this. You've come light years in what you proposed to us previously, so I will approve. One second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And I will, I will echo Mr. Poole's thoughts. When everybody left here a month ago, I was not sure everybody was gonna get together to play in the sandbox, but I'm glad they did, and, uh, no further discussion?
Just a comment on the traffic to that gentleman too, is, you know, them, uh, removing the 300, um, units from that plan for 20 years, that's gonna substantially reduce, uh, some of the traffic impact as well.
Sir, you can't, you can't talk from the audience.
Okay, uh, no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I think that concludes our agenda for today. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Go Pasco and Pasco County Libraries are perfect partners, perfect place to buy your bus pass. I'm very excited to introduce our newest library where you could buy bus passes. We listened to your requests, and you can now buy your bus passes at the downtown New Port Ritchie Library.
It's very convenient to come from where I live to the library to pick up, uh, a bus pass. Before, I would have to use two buses, and now I can use one.
The New Port Ritchie Public Library acts as a information hub to the entire West Pasco community. We are thrilled to be able to offer the Go Pasco Bus Passes as an additional service for our community.
The bus passes that you could buy at the downtown New Port Ritchie Library are 31-day regular and reduced, and the 20 ride. And don't forget, you can get your day passes on the bus. The partnership between Go Pasco and the New Port Ritchie Library Downtown is a great, great partnership. We've wanted this for many years. I just love Go Pasco. Find your way to Pasco County Libraries with Go Pasco at gobasco.com.
Hey, everyone, I'm Ryan Hughes, Public Information Officer for Pasco County. We get a lot of questions about our recycling program, like what to do with everyday items like this little thing. Well, let me walk you through it. The same company that picks up your trash also picks up your recycling. Once those items are collected, the reusable materials go on a long journey from your home or office to Pasco County's recycling transfer facility. Everything that's recycled ends up right here in this huge pile. Our county facility accepts recycling from all over the county before we send it to a private material recovery facility in Pinellas. Then sophisticated machines go through every bit of recycling and sort it into the right spot. From there, it's off to other facilities where it's broken down and eventually made into something new like this. In Pasco County, if you pay for curbside trash service, weekly recycling is included. Just contact your hauler for a pickup schedule or order a recycling cart. Thank you for helping make Pasco a cleaner, greener community. For more information on Pasco's recycling program, visit mypasco.net.
Today, we're out here with PCPT, and we are training, um, our dogs, our puppies, to enter and ride a bus. We are on the parat transit bus and the regular buses. We've learned about ramps and stairs and lifts, and, um, each of our puppies had an opportunity to go up and down and into the bus and ride one. For some of them, it's the very first time.
There are a lot of sounds and feels of a bus, like our fixed route. You can feel the ground shaking, there's a lot of movement, you hear breaking, sometimes you.